It's like it's dying all throughout the whole thing. It's like I can't take it.
Good job. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Get back here.
I don't see any glasses over here. That'll be where my husband would have them. His glasses were in his pocket the whole time.
His glasses were in his pocket the whole time?
All right, welcome back. I'm going to recall this meeting to order. Thanks to the board and thanks to our attorney. We have reviewed the legal advice and are going to move on with the meeting. I don't think there's anything expected in small D, but just want to check in with anybody. Is there any action to be taken? All right, seeing that, we're going to keep moving on. That brings us to item fifteen, which is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. This, my office, will move forward, obviously, with the hiring of police chief and interim, as expected. That will keep me very busy, I'm sure. As we approach the end of the year, we will be in kind of final budget amendments. As you recall, last year, it is recommended by our firm, as well as the auditor, that we keep, kind of keep our calendars open if there's one final round in December after the meetings have taken place, to have that final round of budget amendments. I would ask that you try to do that. I know it's during the holiday season, but that's, it's very important to this township and to us continuing to have clean audits without any comments, and I'm very proud of that. And I'm very proud of our entire staff because it takes a lot of work to get that rating. We will also be finishing out this, the budget that's been in front of you for a public hearing, which will be noticed, and you will all receive copy of for the meeting November eighteenth, with those final items that need to be clarified, including roads and those other items that were identified tonight. So we'll proceed with that preparation. In addition to that, is if we needed more, it is fourteen days prior to the general election. I'll let the clerk speak to that, but this office is busy from opening to closing, issuing ballots, answering questions on the phone, and helping people that walk in here to help them be able to vote in the way that they choose to. The nine days of voting will start. I'll let the clerk talk about that, but that adds another level of complexity to what we're already doing. So I will leave it at that, and if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
When do you think we could expect to see that sort of final draft of the budget?
I will try to turn that out this week. Part of that will be able to, to be able to get the answers that I've inquired as to the roads. So that will be one of the factors that impacts that.
I think it'll be helpful for us to have as much time as possible to sort of marinate on it and answer questions from the community who are interested.
We will also put out the notice that's required and make that available both to walk-ins that would wish to have a copy of it, as well as people that want to obtain that online and review it. So make you aware when that happens so that you'll be prepared as well.
Thank you.
I got a question. So you had said that all the benefits came in lower?
Correct.
Are you going to make those changes then also at this point in time?
Yes, I will.
It's almost half, right?
Yes, it is.
Like what we budgeted.
I factored at thirteen and it came in at seven point five, which is awesome. I'm frustrated because SCUMA only got a six percent increase, so.
Take the win.
Okay, smaller staff, but I will, I'll take the win.
All right.
Thank you.
Other questions? Anything else? All right. Did you mention the canceled meeting? Yes, you did, earlier.
Yeah, it is listed under the superintendent's report on the agenda, canceled the Board of Trustees meeting on Monday, November fourth, in preparation for the election, and then obviously the public hearing and adaption of the 2025 budget on Monday, November eighteenth, 2024.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then board members who are leaving and board members who are coming will join us or leave us on the twentieth. Is that right?
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the end of the meeting. We're at item sixteen, public statement two. Again, folks from the audience are welcome to talk to us about anything under the sun for up to three minutes. Anybody interested in public comment? Introduce yourself and head right into it.
Mike Lapham, live over on Clark Road. Bath Township's been a very important part of my life for the last twenty years, and I've chosen to work here, I've chosen to raise my family here, and I have found that compared to the area, and I mean this with a compliment, we have a very unique personality when it comes to our community, and I think that is a blessing. And to kind of piggyback on what trustee Rosenkrantz said, our police department polices our community in a way that they deserve and in a way that they expect, and I think that comes from having leaders like Jack Phillips and Lyle Lindemuller and Gary Smith. And I think there's an importance to keeping that tradition going by considering our applicants who are coming from the current administration at the police department. I think they know how this department runs the best. I think they know what the community expects of its police officers. I think they know how to lead their police officers in a way that encourages the community to basically behave themselves as well as we can get them to do. So I really think that consideration should be taken for those applicants that are coming from within. I think we are blessed to have applicants that we do coming from within. They both have amazing personalities. They both have very strong skill sets that are unique to one another, and I really think that we're in a good place with what we have available to us internally. So just, I really want to see that for this department, for this community. I plan on being here for quite a while. I want it to be the safest, most pleasant place for people to grow up and raise their families and all that kind of stuff. So that's, that's all I've got. If Chief were still here, I'd say congratulations, and I would tell him thank you for everything over the past seventeen years. It's been fantastic. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to address the board tonight?
Matt Heffelfinger, Commons Felling, I'm an officer with Bath Township.
Yeah, Commons Felling.
We had well, well over probably a hundred years of experience within law enforcement to speak this evening, and then everyone except Lyle, other than mine, spoke. Because Lyle's old. A tremendous amount of experience and a lot of respected leaders who are held in very high regard within the law enforcement community in this county and in the general area. I came originally in my career from a different county and just briefly experienced, there's a very significant difference in culture between departments, between counties, and that speaks to the population, the prosecutor, a number of factors. But there's a tremendous difference. We've, we've talked a lot from leaders and we've heard concerns from the community. A brief perspective I'd like to offer is from road patrol. I think morale within the department is vital to our performance as a department, to us serving the community in the best possible capacity that we can, and a tremendous part of that morale is trust in our leaders. Lieutenant Mardigan and Sergeant Hamilton both have established reputations, established trust, and established relationships with us within the department. They have proven track records of performance, both that we know of and the larger community does as well. And to Ms. Kellerman's point of selecting the best candidate, I would just like to state that I believe they're sitting in this room. That's it.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is John Mo. I'm a resident of the township, and I live out on Peacock Road. And so I serve in a bit of a unique role, Mr. Supervisor and Board. I'm honored to serve as a reserve officer here for the township. I'm the chaplain. I'm a member of the peer support team. I'm also, was appointed to the Clinton County Special Operations Team by Lieutenant Mardigan, and I continue to serve under Sergeant Hamilton as a chaplain and a, and a responding member of that team, and I take that, that work very seriously. I also am a mounted division deputy for the county, and I'm the chaplain for the sheriff's office and the peer support team coordinator for the sheriff's office. So I think you see a theme in what I do, and that's I care deeply for these police officers and their families, and I do serve the Bath Fire Department as well. But, so my role is a little bit different. I'm not a prosecutor. I'm not a chief, but I care for these people as people, okay? So I wanted to take a couple of minutes and share some thoughts related to, you know, the acceptance of Chief Smith's notice of retirement. I want to thank you as the board for the support that you give our police department, and specifically to our chiefs and to allow us to police society in a, in a fair way. I thank you for that support and from a citizen that lives in this little thirty-six square mile footprint. Secondly, with Chief Smith's announcement, no doubt your efforts will turn toward the task of seeking a correct candidate to fill the very important role of police chief for Bath Township. With this in mind, I'd like to humbly submit that you consider keeping the selection process to someone that we already have. Of course, you're going to look outside, but I think that there should be, for a lot of reasons stated, that we should look seriously at our two quality candidates. I'm of this persuasion because I've, I've been honored to have developed deep personal friendships with our candidates over the past fourteen years. I'm not sure if you have any law enforcement professional close friends, but gaining their trust and getting to know them at the core of who they are as people is no small feat. In fact, it took about two years of scrutiny and vetting. In fact, it took about two years of scrutiny and vetting as the new guy to be accepted by this crew. And I only tell you that as part of the story to give context to this. I know our likely candidate, candidates, our likely internal candidates to be deeply principled men, who have invested time and treasure into this township both personally and professionally. Additionally, they greatly respect the rule of law, and respect the boundaries that protect individual rights and freedoms. They willfully submit to the proper legal process and justification when force, enforcement actions are necessary for the protection of citizens from others who choose to have blatant disregard for the civility and of peaceful conduct. These men know this township and care about what happens here. Lastly, I'm almost done, no doubt there are others with experience, academic and professional qualifications to fill the role as Bath Township Police Chief. However, one factor that is often non-d discernible on paper, or even during oral face-to-face interview, is the integrity of a man and the true thoughts and motives at his, at his core. One of the greatest privileges of my life is to know our likely candidates at this deep personal level, I've seen them demonstrate these essential characteristics both personally and professionally while no one else was watching. I humbly submit that seeking a police chief from within our ranks will serve to maintain a strong connection with our community, ensure continuity of standards, procedures, and training with our law enforcement partners within the county. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Other folks want to address the board tonight?
Beth Baaki, assessor and resident on Angler Road in Bath Township. I'm sad that we're losing Gary at this way, I feel that he had more in him to give to us, but I'm happy for him and his family to be able to retire and move on, and just be the honorable person that he really is. I went to school with him, grew up with him, and I just have a whole heart for him, and I appreciate all of his years of service.
Thanks, Beth.
Thanks. Anyone else? All right, we're going to move on then. That brings us to item number seventeen, board member comments, Sherry, we're going to start with you tonight. Surprise.
Thank you all for coming, and it's great to hear from so many of our public here. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for everybody for coming, giving your input, it gives us a lot to think about.
For the board members, I gave you a handout since we were talking about future of the police department, I think you probably all got this in email, but I thought it was very interesting about the struggle to find police officers for positions, and that we're certainly not alone in that. So it was a good and relatively quick read, so I thought I would share that with you as well. And then lastly, to folks in the community, don't forget to vote. Give Brenda some job security, vote, vote, vote.
Just to let you know, the nine days of early voting will start this Saturday, so we're really close to election day. We've sent out about thirty-one hundred absentee voter ballots so far. As about that, I want to congratulate Gary, he's not here anymore, so I'll talk to him tomorrow. Thank you.
I have nothing.
I just wanted to recognize all of the hard work that our staff is doing to prepare for the election, I popped in a couple times last week with a few things, and it was bustling in there, just nonstop people coming in and out and questions and dropping things off and picking things up, and they handled it so well and friendly, and I'm sure that that gets rough day after day after day, the end is in sight, but I just wanted to acknowledge all the hard work you guys are doing.
Brenda, did you already do the public testing?
Yes, we did it last Wednesday, yes.
I learned a lot when you walked me through that, so I think it's good for public who are interested in how the process works, and frankly, the safety of the process and how things are checked and double-checked, it's good, so next time we'll invite folks out. All right, that's it on our agenda today, entertain a motion for adjournment?
Well, second.
Motion is second, any discussion, hearing none, we'll take a voice vote, all those in favor of journeying, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we stand adjourned. I don't think I brought it in, I think it's in my car.